Selectment's meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2016. Or 21st, that is the 21st?
Yeah.
That is 21st? 2016. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll have a period of public, weekly public discussion if anybody wants to approach the board. They're gonna take action relative to the presentation by Chris Mitchell of Homes For Our Troops on building a home for veterans in Freetown at 29 King Phillips Way. Approved Chapter 90, final report for Richmond Road Bridge is submitted by Mr. Charles McComber, Highway Surveyor. Approved Richmond Road Change Order submitted by Highway Surveyor Charles McComber to discuss and vote on a solid waste, solid waste removal options. Approve a road permit for 62 Narrows Road and Causeway Street. And approve a Board of Selectmen's meetings from January 26, 2016, February 3rd, 2016, February 22nd, 2016, and March 7 and 9, 2016. And then discussion with Lucy Rosa regarding the Library Planning and Design Grant. So is anyone here that would like to approach the board for weekly public discussion?
Yes.
Could you identify yourself for the camera, please?
Hello.
And is anybody recording this meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam.
My name is Joseph Montour, 46 Chase Road. I refrain myself from a lot of things lately, but this one here impacted me directly. Last night, in other words, we had a little bit of snow. And this morning, in other words, I was able to look out, and it was after just having my yard done last, last week, I find this deplorable situation that the plow created. Two years ago, the berm was all pulled up from the plow. I picked it up and cleaned it up, and that was it. But this time here, in other words, I'd like to voice my opinion and all this stuff. That I, you know, I put up sticks every year. I just took them down last week, and there it is, in other words, you know? So I would really like, in other words, even though it's my tax dollar, that this be fixed up by town. It's my present request.
First thing in the morning. You don't know anything about it. First thing in the morning, it'll be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you want to see it, Chuck?
No. I know where he lives.
Yeah.
Well, I think I pointed it out today to one of the trucks that drove by also. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right? Have a good evening.
Bye, Joe.
I'm sorry I'm not gonna stay, but for the past six months, you know, as I've had a tumor that's been treated out, you know, so I just wanna let you know that's why I'm not staying. Thank you.
All right. Take care, Joe. Take care of yourself.
I realize I handled that one without opening my mouth. Am I here or what?
You're good.
No, Chuck handles it.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay. Anybody else need to approach the board, public discussion? Okay, Mr. Chris Mitchell, are you here somewhere?
Here.
Could you approach the board and identify yourself, please?
Chris Gomes with us, too. He's the veteran member holding on for.
Okay.
Full packets. You and our organization.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Mitchell. With Homes For Our Troops, we're a national nonprofit organization that builds brand-new homes for civilians and veterans mortgage-free, anywhere they wanna live in the country. To date, we have built in 42 states. We've completed 209 homes and other 53 homes under construction. And I'm very happy to say that one of the homes is gonna be in Freetown for Chris Gomes. We are starting the, the construction of it now. Some minor site work happening. We're having a community kickoff, which is gonna be April 16. The invitation is in here. We may move it. There was a conflict with the VFW locally, so we're gonna probably relocate it back to the VFW in Freetown. I'll update everybody probably tomorrow with an email on that. Reason I'm here tonight is just to let you know that we're building this home in, in your community. Chris could have chosen anywhere he wanted to live in the country. He chose right here in Massachusetts in Freetown. He's a local VSO for New Bedford, and he's really looking forward to the community.
Welcome to the community.
Say a few words, Chris?
Just looking forward to moving to Freetown. I know a few people in town. I belong to the VFW here in Freetown for a few years now, was one of the board directors there. So I know a little, very little of Freetown, but I, what I do know, I have enjoyed it. It's quiet. Seems like a lot of the community, you know, knows each other, and it's kind of a small, tight-knit community. So I'm enjoying that rather than where I am now and where I've grown up in the South End of New Bedford. It'd be quite the change, somewhere I can actually bring up my child and not have to worry about too much.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to it.
Well, I welcome you. I'm sure the board will welcome you.
Pick a good spot.
Our organization is really excited about this. We're based in Tock, Mass., within existence since 2004. And for us to be able to build a home where we build nationwide, 20 minutes from our office, we're just really excited. And again...
Is this like habitat for a committee where the community comes?
No, the community will be able to get dirty with the Landscape Day, but when we come into a community, we hire or look for a local builder, a licensed professional builder, to either volunteer, which on this, we have Long, Long Homes, I believe is the name of it.
Longfield Homes.
They have stepped up as a build partner. So they are doing this 100% at no cost to us. Any of the other materials and stuff, we have corporate partners that donate products that go into all the homes. So we always look for a reputable licensed builder to either donate, or if we can't get him to donate, we will pay him to do it.
So this isn't a contractor building a house and then giving it away?
No, it's our organization getting a contractor to build our home. We have a specific model. It's a 2,650 square foot ranch, slab-on-grade, fully accessible. I mean, you can't tell his injuries, but Chris lost his leg in Iraq, so, you know, as he ages, and any of our veterans ages, their needs are gonna be different, so, you know, he might have to be in his wheelchair. So it's fully accessible, hallways are wider, roll-in showers, or...
Has anybody contacted our building inspector so maybe he can help you along in the process?
I believe, I believe our in-house construction manager has spoken with the building inspector. I know we've already had some site work done, so I'm sure they're involved at this point.
It's parked, and there's a plan already for the seventh. So now he's just gotta move forward with the building.
Yeah, I just was actually up a lot before I came here.
And you need a well, that's all.
Yep.
So let's, let's make sure we keep Scott in there, Jack?
Yes.
So moving forward, everything's done, according to wells and so on. Well, we certainly thank you for your generosity, and we certainly, the board welcomes you to Freetown. When the house is built, you know, you're welcome to the bar at any time.
We can actually sign you up for some committees, too, so...
He'll be happy to volunteer.
I have done a few things in New Bedford, and so I guess I'll be, I'll probably be looking at different things to do in the community.
That'd be great. We'd love to have you.
I think it's in the finance committee.
Thank you so much.
How much the town manager in Millborough when you built your first home?
Oh, Pete Damon.
Yes. And so welcome to Freetown.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're very excited. I tell you, when, when, we have a lot of local supporters that will support us on anything we do, but whenever there's a home, we did a, the last home we did in New England was in New Hampshire two years ago, was featured on this old house. Our office was abuzz with all sorts of local people wanting to volunteer. Same with the one we built right before that in Rhode Island. There'll be three ceremonies around Chris's build. The kickoff ceremony will be on April 16, and that is basically a way for us to formally introduce him to the community and for the community to find out more about Homes For Our Troops. The second one is the Volunteer Landscape Day, when the home is about 80% complete, and we'll reach out to all the local people that wanna come and help. And we physically go in there, 8:30 on a Saturday morning, it's just a dirt lot, and we'll go in and put in 10,000 square feet of sod, trees, mulch landscape. It'll be done by noon time. And then probably a month or six weeks after that will be the, the key ceremony, when we physically cut the ribbon and turn the keys over to him and Leslie and Blade Print. Yeah, so, yeah, it'll be great.
What day do you shoot them for? That'd be pretty short.
Can't say that with him in the room. We like to think...
I'll retract that question.
Yeah, we like to think four to six months, and Chris, Chris and I have talked about it. It's, when it's done, it's done, but it'll, it'll move right along. There's been a tremendous amount of pre-planning put in, all of, I saw all the orders today for the rough plumbing stuff, the rough everything, so we'll be, Long Built Homes is really on board, and there's been several meetings with them and our internal construction managers. So I would hope by, by early fall, it'll be done. And then he's all yours. Turn him over to Freetown. If there's any other questions, my business card is on the inside of that. Feel free to reach out to me at any point through the progress of the homes. And our, like I said, we're right down the street, so if anybody ever wants to come and check us out and see what we do.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Nice to meet you.
Take care.
Nice to have you. Next on our agenda is to approve Chapter 90. The final report for the Richmond Road Bridge is submitted by Highway Surveyor, Mr. Charles McComber. Do we do that already? I thought we did. Show it up again?
It's a project request. It's basically...
It's because it's over the 275.
Yeah.
Are they two in the same, or are they two different ones?
To jump ship, yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to do the change status, make it to 750, because that's the money that's appropriate to town me. Then we're gonna have to do another one for the 750, 90, 15, whatever it is. This Chapter 90 request of $13,000 is to pay the difference. I'm thinking, I'm gonna be like $900, but I shot it at 13, just in case they get after the different things. I'm really not all that optimistic that it's going to go through Chapter 90 and discussions with them, because the project is basically done, being paid something with the... So tomorrow, I'm gonna go thankfully and see if I can get them to approve that. If not, we're gonna have to do the, we have to the finance committee and get whatever money. But I figured I'd at least try the paperwork with Chapter 90, charge the request, and hopefully it'll apply. If not, we'll come back at a later date, and we'll go to finance committee and try to come up with the next one.
13 grand? Oh, 13?
Yeah, whatever. Like I said, it should, right now, it's like 950, I don't have any, but we do have two little odds and ends to do, whether they're gonna lose details, so that might tick it up a little bit. But we're, like I said, we're in good shape with the bridge, it's just a matter of, we have come this far, we just have to pay the money to build. She's kinda got us jumping through hoops a little bit with the contract. The contract was for 745, so you had to do a change status, it's 750, and then we're gonna do another change status to deliver the final bonus. And in the past, it's just, we just paid the money on something, but this is where we're at.
Will she let you know before the end of this fiscal year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it should be done. I think it's happening. We should have, I'll probably have a verbal approval or a disapproval tomorrow. I've already kinda got, I've already kinda got a verbal disapproval of the whole thing, but I'm gonna, Jim Noyes is gonna do a formal, hoping to look at the case and let's hope they help us.
This discussion, that encompassed the line on the agenda?
Yes. That, the next thing to sign is the, if anything, that brings us up to that 750.
Okay.
The one we can't sign is, is the first one we're talking about.
First one is the Chapter 90 request.
Right, we can't, you don't want to...
I want you to sign it.
Oh, you want us to sign it?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the Chapter 90 request, as submitted by Highway Surveyor.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the Chapter 90 financial request submitted by Charles McComber. On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Also, I'm gonna approve the return room change order as in the amount of $13,000 that's submitted by Charles McComber. Should that not come through fruition with, for Chapter 90, I will also make a motion, or as part of my motion, to submit it to the finance committee as requested by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded as stated by Selectmen Chico.
Then you don't have to come back, so it'll be done.
On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Jack will have to sign off on the Chico and the finance committee.
Yeah. So, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to discuss and vote on solid waste options. We have two proposals, one from Mr. Borges and one from Mr. Holland. The people here represent the two companies.
Howland Disposal, Mr. Chairman?
And you would be?
Mark Moran, General Manager of Howland Disposal.
A little bit louder so they can pick it up on the cameras. That way you'd be...
Mark Moran with Howland Disposal, General Manager.
Sure. Sit so we can pop in. Mr. Borges, do identify yourself for the camera, please, so we know who you are, and come and sit over here. There's a seat there.
Mr. Borges.
Town Administrator, Jack Hiliyan. And Kevin, our health agent, has done some research on this. Rather than go over all the facts and figures and scratch again, where are we?
Well, we, we did an initial proposal. We received an initial proposal from Mr. Borges to continue for the next three years. Peter has been contracted for a good 10 years anyway, Peter.
10? The only one that's ever held a seat in that for the town.
Yeah. And, and we also received a proposal from Howland Disposal. In the first round of proposals, Mr. Borges was $245,191, to be exact, above the proposal of Mr. Howland for the three years of the contract. When Kevin and I told Peter that he was that much higher for the three years, Peter reminded us that we were not obligated to accept below his proposal. I'm reading now from a memo I sent to the board last Friday. In Peter's second proposal, he cut his price by $245,500 to get below Howland's original price by $309. He, he said at that time, when he submitted the proposal to Kevin Bernado and I, that he could go bankrupt in six months. And he continued and said that if he were two years older, he'd retire and not have submitted the proposal at all. Peter's first price, first-year price in his second proposal was $300,000, which is $5,000 higher than Howland's first-year proposal of $295,000. And Mr. Borges is currently budgeted in the, in the current fiscal year to receive $324,000 compared to his proposal, three-year proposal of $300,000, $302, and $305 over the three-year Kevin and I have also forwarded to the board interviews that Kevin did with representatives of the towns of Avon, Plainville, Halifax, Swansea, and Acushnet. And their recommendations of Howland Disposal were uniformly excellent. We also required liability insurance coverage that is significantly higher than what's been generally carried. And we also indicated that we would, we wanted them to quote, both companies to quote, on not only the additional liability insurance, but additional pollution coverage, which was recommended by both our town council and our insurance advisors, Cap and Risk Management, Vagora, and the person of Vagora Peckham, whose, whose company works for Maya. Maya has all of our liability insurance. And the two companies were asked how much they would add to their proposals, that they would need to have the town reimburse of the additional insurance costs, and on each, for each year of the, of the contract period, three-year contract period. Mr. Borges, I'm sorry, Mr. Howland, Howland Disposal responded, and you have the copies of all that documentation, that their increased cost would be $8,000 per year for like three years of the contract. Mr. Borges checked with his insurance company, and the increase that he would make to his proposal would be between $15,986 and $20,986 annually. This, this results in a new analysis, which Selectmen Sadek put in this format, which we have for you tonight, which reflects that the contract savings to the town to move to Howland Disposal over the three-year term of the contract would be $31,149. And based on all of that, both Kevin Bernado and I would recommend that the board consider Howland Disposal for the next three years of the contract.
Those your feelings do, Kevin?
Yes, I'd like to say though, Peter Borges has been with us many years, he's well experienced. And looking back at Mr. Howland's references, again, well experienced, I took into consideration the numbers that were given to me, and that's how I came to my determination of which way to go.
$31,000 is not a money. And I represent the taxpayers. Yes, sir.
Apparently, I can't lightly joke in a town hall, because it's finally written down. What was my number? Boy, I hope I don't go bankrupt. I like joke. I don't think we can do that.
So you weren't serious when you said that?
No. I'm gonna be...
I wasn't there, I'm listening.
I'm gonna be 60 this year, and I said, man, if I was gonna be 62, I'd just retire and not work, but I gotta keep working. I was asked in an email Thursday at about 5:30 about the insurance stuff. My insurance people contacted one person. They could probably be 30 to contact to get pricing. That should've been done a month ago, and I would have way more time to research it and maybe get better numbers.
Reasonably, you were $240,000 over Mr. Howland's bill. That's a lot of money.
It is.
So...
The only way...
If he had not submitted a bill, Mr. Borges, or a proposal, the taxpayers would've been on the hook for $240,000 bucks. Now, to me, I find that incredible, that there's that much space in the actual cost and another $240,000 in profit on the backs of the taxpayers. I'm gonna be upfront with you. But comments, Selectmen, other Selectmen? Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, I knew you were joking. I know that that's not you, so that didn't even cross my mind. It was a, we have people that do that kinda joke all the time, and they're on committees and everything else, so I knew that that was a joke. I'm a little confused as to why your increase for insurance was $8,000 and your increase for insurance is almost double that. So that makes me a little leery. I'm not, I'm not, I've been questioning that. I'm not sure why that is, and it could be because you didn't have time to shop around. Not only have you been embedded in this community forever, and you've been the one, the backbone of doing this for us since day one, you also pay taxes in this town, so I know where your heart is.
My work at a town company is in Omaha, Nebraska. It's not like you just need these figures and you walk up the street. You can shop around far away and get things done, but I had very limited time.
You know what? Let me ask you a question here. Let's, my opinion at this point in time, let's put this out to bid. Let's put this out to bid and have a sealed bid opening and see who comes in with the lowest. That way you give other people opportunity to bid on it also.
Mr. Pacheco? That's on for you.
It'll give you time to shop around.
Right, it gives you time to go out to bid. Because, and you know what? I think we should make a request for bid, proposal, and get, you know, give them a timeline and get it in to everybody. This opens it up to everybody. Give it a timeline to get it in here, we have a sealed bid opening, end of story.
But everybody's gotta be on the same page as to what the qualifications are. We're not gonna, we can't change the qualifications or, or the requirements, you know, 24 hours before the bid is due.
It should be in your RFP, correct?
Yeah, it's gotta be in the RFP.
Yeah. It's gotta be written properly.
Absolutely. All the requirements should be in the RFP.
Would you stick with a July 1st start date? Because we're going into April here, it doesn't leave much time, so typically, that's when fiscal years change and things like that.
Well, let's change your line first, and if we, we gotta have garbage collection, you know? So this is something that we gotta get out right away. I'll make it into a formidable motion to go out to bid for the trash.
Second.
Second that, Mr. Pacheco?
I did.
I have a motion made and seconded to send our trash requirements out to bid.
Trash recycling.
Trash recycling out to bid. And do I have that motion made and seconded all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Jack, what do you think the timeframe is to get an RPO?
I think we're gonna do it within a week.
By the end of this week, you think? Yes. Okay.
That way we'll have a sealed bid opening.
Everybody's on the same page?
Everybody's on the same page, sealed bid opening, end of story.
And I wanna thank you for your interest in our program here, 'cause right off the bat, it looks like you saved the taxpayers $240,000 bucks.
I appreciate the opportunity.
I appreciate that.
You have some, you have...
Well, we were, we were asked to supply some information, insurance certificates...
Well, we were, we were asked to supply some information, insurance certificates, some policies and procedures that we have in place. We were asked to bring tonight.
Want to submit it as part of your bid?
Asset list, like, I'm sure that will be included in the bid.
Yeah, I think you should submit it by the time, if you, if you're going to make a proposal on the bid, if you're going to put a bid in, that would go.
I mean, a lot of this stuff really should be submitted once a contract is ready to be drawn up for the successful bid. You don't want drug policies for people that are bidding.
We'll submit the, I just received tonight, the, from Town Council, the contract document will be asking the successful bidder to sign, so I'll send that in a bid package as well.
You got a document already from Town Council?
I just got it today.
Well, they must have got a check. They must have got a check.
Who?
Town Council.
They're always getting checks from us.
Sorry, I thought you joked.
No, no, Peter, keep on joking.
You can always joke, Peter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You look forward to that.
Soon.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the road opening for sixty-two Narrows Road and Sixth Causeway Street.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the road opening permit for sixty-two Narrows Road and Sixth Causeway Street. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. The next thing on the agenda is to approve the Board of Selectmen meetings for January twenty-sixth, February third, February twenty-second, March seventh, and ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I looked them all, they looked okay to me, so I'll second them.
I read them all, they looked amazing. I second that, I have a motion made and seconded to approve the aforementioned minutes for January twenty-sixth, third, February third, twenty, February twenty-second, March seventh and ninth.
We have school on the third, though.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I don't see, you see.
So I'm going to, excuse me, just abstain for the February third one, because I was not here. And March seventh and March ninth, too. Well, yeah, okay.
March seventh, month?
Stop having meetings, then. I think you do that on purpose, so you know I'm not here.
Who are you kidding?
Okay. Next.
Are we all set, guys?
Yeah, we're all set. We're just playing.
A little playing over here. Lucille Rosa's not here, so we're going to take action relative to discussion with Lucille Rosa regarding the library planning and design grant. She's not here, so I'll move on to the Board of Health. I see nothing on the agenda for that. So we'll move on to personnel.
Did you have a flu clinic or anything like that? Well, this past week, wasn't there something? Rabies clinic or something?
Oh, there was a rabies clinic, sadly, that, that, Jack, he said to me, I missed you bringing your cat. I said, oh my goodness, I missed it. So Lakeville's having one next weekend.
Uh-oh. All right, let me get to where I am, Lee, because this is a hundred and one pages of stuff.
Yes.
Okay, I have two changes status. One for Patrick Lee from student officer, reserve officer from twenty-seven seventy-one to same rate, but a regular patrolman, too. It includes college incentive. And also one for Thomas Long for the same reasons, but his goes from twenty-five sixty to twenty-five sixty.
You want a motion?
Yes.
To approve? I make the motion to approve.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I also have a letter of resignation. Please accept this letter as my formal notice of resignation from the Freetown Communication Center as a full-time signal operator effective Saturday, April second. Her last full-time shift will take place on Friday, April first, twenty sixteen, four to midnight. It was a very difficult decision for me, as I have enjoyed my time working for the department, the connections I've formed with both Freetown Police and Freetown Fire over the past two year, two and a half years will always have a special place in my heart. Appreciate the time and patience that your departments have shown in supporting my development both as a professional and a person. My time here has shown me that being the voice behind nine-one-one is my true calling. The experience I've gained with your department will be invaluable to me as I continue to pursue further professional growth. I wish you all well, and I wish everybody in their respective departments all the best. Freetown was my first home and my stepping stone. Sincerely, Lydia St. Lawrence.
I'll make the motion to approve her resignation, but there's, the next order of business is she's going to stay with us as a part-timer.
She would like to be a part-timer, correct?
So can I make the motion to do both?
Yep.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we make sure, Ally, that we send her a letter saying that we have approved her for the part-time? And we'll miss her, but glad to see that she's still sticking around. And that's it for me.
There was, there was one thing, there was supposed to be interviews for the replacement of Lydia full-time. The job was never posted on our website. So Jack contacted town, it has to be reposted. It was never posted. The job wasn't posted.
Okay. Are we supposed to stay until she gets here?
I don't intend on staying until she gets here, I'll tell you that. We spend enough time in meetings and things, so.
Well, I guess this will give us, me and Mr. Sadek, our, no, we're going to make you stay till, I don't know, at least another hour, it's your last meeting.
Ally, did you bring the pen?
Come on, it's your last meeting.
Wait a second.
Can I put it out there?
Where's that pen?
I feel a big set up there.
You know how the president or the governor, when they sign bills and so forth? They sign each letter with a different pen and they hand it out. Well, look at it. Today, today, Lee was in the town hall signing the warrants, like we do every week. And this is the pen that Lee used to sign the warrants. So I think as a gesture of gratitude for his service here, after he signs the other documents, we can't let him keep this pen, and maybe twenty years down the road, it might be worth something.
There you go. Because it's not worth it now.
I like you didn't spend, you didn't waste any money on packaging. That looks like a Post-it note wrapped it up.
Well, that's the best Ally could do today.
From the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you, the Selectmen, this dope guy, their appreciation. By the way, it's only half-full of ink, Mr. Sadek. So somebody else used it.
And don't forget to go out and vote on April fourth. We have one contested race for Assessor, so that is an important position to go out there and vote. And for Selectmen, if you scan the camera, that young fellow over there, he's the only name on the ballot for Selectmen, Robert Joes.
Yes, sir, aye.
And in a couple of weeks, you'll be sitting up here making the decisions with us.
Very possible.
Very possible.
All you got to do is vote for yourself on your end.
Don't let any chickens before they hatch.
Okay, moving on to new business, the dates for the upcoming Board of Selectmen's meeting are Tuesday, April the fifth, Tuesday, April the nineteenth, May the second, May the sixteenth, and Tuesday, May the thirty-first.
I think we should have one April second.
Let me know how you make out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Moving on to old business, the water agreement. That looks like it may be coming to fruition here sometime.
Yes, I can tell you that today, some data we were waiting for from the company that does our water sampling produced the data, Kevin was able to send it off to Far River and also to our attorney and also to the board. And I think we'll probably have, I'm hoping that we have a document, new agreement to look at and finally sign off on probably within a week or two. If you don't mind, Jack, if you put this down in your notes, could you get Paul, just call Jonathan and see where we are in this?
Sure.
Because he was supposed to be working with the city solicitor at Far River.
Yep.
Okay, so this should be, and work on a new language for the personal bylaw, that's that adjustment.
That's just that one, one line, so that should be fine.
Said he'd have it.
Ashley, Ally, we do have to open the warrants. When are we, when, do you want to do that, the next meeting?
Yeah.
The next meeting? Okay, we'll do that on the next meeting, all right.
And police building, can we get, can we set up a date for having a first meeting for the, for the building committee maybe next month? Could we?
Yeah. Put that on the agenda for the.
To set up a meeting with the building committee?
Really, Lee, it's been fun, right?
It has, has it?
You didn't realize, you didn't realize it was like, it's intense.
It was a lot, you know, it's a lot of work. I'm going to say this, that as a board, I couldn't have found two other Selectmen that were better to work with under different circum, under any circumstances. Although I can't say we agreed on everything all the time, but I think every decision that we made as a board was for the betterment of the town. I don't think that any decision we made was, was an alternative or based on personal feelings. It was always based on, it was based for the town. And I'm very proud to be part of this board with these two Selectmen. I think they're top shelf, and I think Mr. Joes is going to find out how great they are to work with.
Thank you.
Thanks. I wish you luck.
Now, give me the five bucks.
Well, I do, I do want to say that it's always great to come to a meeting, because both Lee and I have sat next to a rose for the last three years. How about that, huh?
That was good, that was good.
I'm getting better, aren't I?
I was a thorn. Then I, then I went to rose. Then I was a thorn. I, I, I'm very happy with everything, but I'm, thank you for the support from you two for the last week. It's been difficult, two weeks actually. Also, I know that we've lost a person in town that also gave his hot and soul to the town of Freetown, Mr. Philorillo, and I know the board wishes them, you know, our hot fellow sorrow and deepest sympathies, and I hope that they're all doing as well as can be expected.
Mike was a, a big loss.
Yeah.
He was involved in the town, I've been here forty-two years, and Mike's been involved in the town for that, that long.
I mean, I, I was with my diamond, so, for a while.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I don't think we should. And if Lucille wants to be on the next agenda, can you just set a time for her, so then that way?
Yeah.
Thanks, Ally. I'll second the motion to adjourn.
I have a motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, you hear that? That's a fat lady singing off. It is.
Yeah, yeah, it's your last one, right?
This meeting is over, au revoir.
Au revoir.
I'm emancipated.
We don't need to do it, Mike.